Order. First item on agenda is the surplus property.
Board, in your packet, you have an item, um, surplus property for Rossview Middle School basketball jerseys. According to policy, any surplus items must be approved by the board for disposal of any times. Rossview Middle School has made the request to use the surplus old jerseys, um, forty-one jerseys, um, to be used at basketball games to be thrown out to spectators. So that is the request from Rossview Middle for the basketball jerseys.
Okay, move on to item number two, surplus property disposal request.
In, in your packet, you also have a request, um, for surplus desks. These are desks that have been broken beyond repair. There is a list of those items. These, um, again, according to, to policy, uh, INVP zero zero two, you must, uh, have approval for these.
Okay, item three, surplus property, health and safety.
So for item number three from health and safety, the request is for the disposal of one ice machine. This is a machine from a nurse's office at an elementary school. Um, it has been broken and the repair cannot be made on this and there is no remaining warranty.
Okay, item four, two thousand twenty-four LEA compliance report.
In your packet, you also have the LEA compliance report. Um, LEAs are required to comply with all federal and state education laws and the State Board of Education rules. This annual compliance report is used by the department to ensure that education laws and rules are faithfully executed. If an LEA is non-compliant, we must report that and give a, a plan of action of how we will come into compliance. This is due to the state by November twenty-ninth and must be approved by our school board. We do certify that our LEA is currently in compliance with all federal and state education laws and the state board rules.
Okay, item five, fiscal year twenty-five, November budget amendments.
Yes, I would ask our chief financial officer, Jeff Taylor, to come up and give you the November budget amendments.
Good evening, board. Um, trying to make this as quick as possible. Um, overall revenues increased for the month of November of an amount of eight hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars. Increases on the expenses is a million, four hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred eleven dollars. Excuse me. On the revenues, if you look at the state revenues, six hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred ninety dollars of that is in regards to the TISA on behalf es- uh, payments. That's an estimate of that amount of six, uh, like I said, the six sixty-six. Um, the next amount is the DOD impact aid for children with severe disabilities. That amount was a hundred thirteen thousand, five sixty-nine. And the insurance cut recovery from the tornado damage done at West Creek, an amount of a hundred eleven thousand, fifteen dollars. Uh, moving on to the expenditures under instruction, just, uh, payroll and benefit reconciliation of, uh, decrease at an amount of three hundred ninety-two dollars. Part of that TISA on behalf payments, the expenditure of four hundred sixty thousand, sixty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars for, um, other charges. And then moving, uh, one point one million out of equipment under irregular instruction, that will be going over to technology. We'll get to that when, we'll discuss that when I get there. Um, under special education, payroll and benefit reconciliation of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-three. Um, increase in the subs substitutes, uh, cost based on current trends of about two hundred thirty-nine thousand. And then moving equipment to the state sped pre-K entitlement grant, um, for sixty-nine thousand dollars. As you can see, the remainder of the hundred ninety-eight thousand from the TISA on behalf, uh, payments, as well as the sixty-nine thousand moved, uh, for, from payroll for equipment for the playground, I believe that's for Cumberland Heights Elementary. Uh, moving on to vocational education, once again, uh, increasing that amount, twenty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars for salaries and benefits for substitutes. Uh, moving on down to seventy-two, one-twenty health services, uh, moving sup- uh, from supplies to contracted services, uh, two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. And then, um, some of the allocations removed that were from Burt and Saint B and the amount of a thousand. Under other student support, um, just reconciling the pay, pay, other payroll benefits, payroll and benefits, uh, in the amount of overall a hundred ninety thousand, four ninety-four for salaries, sixty-six thousand, four oh four for benefits, and then added five thousand dollars for the travel in relations to the Blue Ribbon Awards for the Spanish Immersion Program at Barksdale. Under seventy-two, two-ten regular instruction, um, we moved the hundred sixty-nine thousand, two forty-six to, uh, seventy-two, one thirty, other student support. And then down below, um, remove the allocations from Saint B and Burt in the amount of five thousand, six fifty between supplies and materials and staff and staff development. Under, uh, special education report, same thing with Saint B and Burt, removing it from supplies and materials. Under technology, that's where the one point one million I mentioned earlier, that's included in a contract assist, uh, contract services for a safety alert system that will be used for all schools. Then under Board of Education, seventy-two, three-ten, just add an additional hundred thousand for, uh, estimated liability costs. Under seventy-two, four-ten, Office of the Principal, uh, reduce the allocations not needed for Saint B and Burton under contracted services and staff development. And then, uh, under uniforms, we'll get into more of that with transportation and nutrition as well. Uh, just the changes related there where we're purchasing those uniforms instead of renting them. So that move money, that six fi- five fifty is being moved under supplies and materials and there's just a little bit of extra cost initially for those uniforms. Operation of plant, um, based on trends right now with overtime for the custodians. Had a couple of schools with shortages, so we're having to increase that for, um, about eighteen thousand, one ninety-four for the salaries and benefits. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we're reducing the contracted services by fifty-three thousand, three forty-two and adding that into the supplies and materials for uniforms. We, um, have switched over from uniforms to purchasing our uniforms. There's a little bit of an initial cost upfront, but they, we will be purchasing those uniforms. And then on the, at the end, adding a fifty-one thousand, seven ninety-eight for Kirkwood Elementary, the insurance premiums. And as maintenance of plant, same thing, seventeen thousand, two ninety-eight and increase, and that's for the uniforms. Under early childhood education, just increasing that, just based on estimated cost for the substitutes that we currently have, increasing the, by a total of seventy-seven thousand, nine ninety-three. And then just an additional forty-six, one hundred for just the payroll and benefit reconciliation that was done. And then, of course, that decreases the undesignated fund balance by five hundred thirty-one thousand for the GP fund. Moving on to child nutrition, um, decrease the utility allocation by sixty-three thousand dollars, but we're adding five thousand, eight fifty-six, uh, for training for the state school nutrition. Increase in the fund balance by fi- over fifty-seven thousand. And then under transportation, uh, increasing the contracted services. They are continuing to do rentals there, but increasing that by three thousand, five hundred. And then we're moving equipment, eighty-one thousand, six thirty-nine from supplies and materials to equipment for the call, software costs for, uh, TransFinder and StopFinder, which is used by them. And then lastly, on our federal projects, all these are just alloc- appropriating those funds, the revenues and expenditures for those, except for the ARP homeless, the APEN, the IDEA, and the HQIM, and that's just reallocating existing funds within those grants. Do you all have any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Item six.
I would like to have, um, Chief Operations Officer Norm Bromley come forward to discuss goal eight, expanding and maximizing our capacities to support academic offerings and innovations.
Good evening, board. Dr. Luna Vedder. I'm pleased to be here to update you on strategic goal number eight. Um, we provide a capacity in many ways and this, uh, progress report will touch on EL eleven, EL twelve, EL thirteen, as well as ends one and two. Um, I, I understand there's a lot going on tonight, so I want to move through this as rapidly as possible, uh, out of respect for your time. But I do want to be thorough for your benefit. So, starting off, we'll start with, uh, transportation staffing capacity. Um, you remember in twenty-twenty-two when we were around fifty, fifty percent capacity? Those were, those were tough days. In twenty-twenty-three, we managed to reach between sixty-five and seventy percent capacity, and in twenty-twenty-four, we started the year at eighty percent capacity. We currently have thirteen open routes, two hundred and thirty-two drivers, and we're servicing thirty-two thousand, six hundred students. We're averaging about four percent callouts per day, so to deal with that, we implement holds, which are temporary delayed, um, or combining routes, um, double runs, which are buses that complete two assigned separate scheduled trips, and office staff, uh, or vehicle maintenance mechanics, um, serving as temporary drivers. These may occasionally result in schedule deviations, we understand that, but we also believe this is preferable to pausing or eliminating the route entirely, which is what twenty-five percent of the school districts in Tennessee currently do due to staffing shortages. We remain committed to finding solutions that keep our students' transportation needs met. By, or, this year, we're net positive twenty-five new drivers. Uh, we have fifty-three applicants in the training program currently, and we're at a ninety-four percent average retention rate, which means we're keeping the drivers that we've got. By January, we anticipate reaching ninety percent staffing. And the past two years have seen the highest two recruiting and retention years on record at CMCSS. Our goal this year is to surpass that, and we're hopeful that we can be close to full capacity in twenty-twenty-five, and that includes with some substitutes. Moving on to construction, in, uh, twenty-twenty, a plan was approved for a new three-school complex to address enrollment growth. We opened the award-winning Kirkwood Middle School in twenty-twenty, a thirty-one million dollar investment, expanding capacity by twelve hundred and nine students. Last year, we opened the award-winning Kirkwood High School, uh, ninety-one million dollar investment, expanding capacity by sixteen hundred and eighty-six students. And this year, we opened Kirkwood Elementary School one year early due to growth, a fifty-two million dollar investment, expanding capacity by one thousand, fifty-six students. This Kirkwood complex represents one hundred and seventy-four million dollars of investment and increased overall district capacity by eleven percent over our twenty-twenty numbers. A comprehensive boundary analysis was completed and rezoning was approved by the board. You'll remember that this was approved, uh, uh, you considered this back in January for Kirkwood Elementary School. But you'll also remember it was a multi-phased rezoning plan to account for Freedom Elementary, which is opening in twenty-twenty-six. We're, uh, in the process of updating our growth reports and our growth data, uh, and currently that growth data still correlates with the data used for that recommendation. So, board, it looks like you may be off the hook this year for rezoning. Currently, we're in the process of developing the Freedom Elementary Campus for twenty-twenty-six. This is, uh, engineering rendering of that. It's our newest elementary school in the high-growth area of North Clarksville, located on Wallace Boulevard between Gate Two and Tiny Town Road. It consists of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, thirty-two square feet. This is our expanded prototype, so that's, that's the large version of sixty-three classrooms, increasing capacity by an additional one thousand, fifty-six students. Its estimated cost is forty-three point six million dollars. It's planned to open in twenty-twenty-six. Here's our plan. Uh, the zoning strategy was approved back in January. Uh, design approval occurred on March eleventh of this year, land closed in September of twenty-twenty-four. We anticipate bidding and approval wrapping up in May of twenty-twenty-five. Construction through June of twenty-twenty-six and operational in August of twenty-twenty-six. Currently, the district utilizes one hundred and thirty-nine portable classrooms. Ninety-seven are located at elementary schools to balance enrollment while additional capacity, such as Freedom Elementary School, is being delivered. At elementary schools, we're currently at ninety-two percent capacity. We saw a nice drop with the opening of Kirkwood. But you'll notice that seven are above one hundred percent capacity. Our target is eighty-five percent capacity. Five of those are in that high-growth area in the north northeastern area of the county. Middle schools are at ninety-one percent capacity and high schools are closest to our target at eighty-six percent capacity. Notice that CHS is still high. Many students, we believe, opted to stay at CHS after the Kirkwood High School rezoning occurred. Imagine if we hadn't rezoned out of CHS, though. Factoring in community growth with our student growth gives us a picture of what our capacity needs to look like in the future. We use this data to map out the next ten years of construction for coordination with our funding body. Uh, CMCSS updates the long-range plans, uh, to address the capacity needs in the future. Those plans go through a collaborative effort between Montgomery County Commission, Clarksville Montgomery County Regional Planning Commission, and CMCSS. Once tho- once those plans are given the green light or the go-ahead, those plans are then adopted by the board to seek, uh, approval for funding by our elected county commissioners. Seems this is, uh, this information is being updated as we speak in our report, our, our ten-year, uh, growth report, which will be available on the district website in operations under a ten-year facility construction plan. Currently, our building plan looks like this. Uh, Freedom Elementary School, we just saw the timeline for opening in twenty-twenty-six. Then it's followed by an elementary school in Region Two. We will need land in twenty-twenty-five for a twenty-twenty-eight opening. Then an elementary school in Region One, where we will need land in twenty-twenty-eight for a twenty-thirty-one opening. And then that is followed by a middle school in Region One or Region Four, or the border of Region One and Four, followed by a high school in that same area, and another elementary school in Region One, where we will presumably need the land by twenty-thirty for a mid-twenty-thirties opening of that complex. So it's evident by this plan that land, which is shown in orange, is critical to our building program, and CMCSS continues to partner with the county commission to address the new land and capacity needs associated with our community's growth. So that covers new buildings. What are we doing to take care of our forty-six other buildings? We have forty-six buildings valued at one point three billion dollars that we're responsible of caring for. Fifty-five percent of those are over thirty years old. We maintain one hundred thirty-seven acres of conditioned airspace under roof. That's equivalent to six Google plants. Um, so we have used the heck out of some one-time opportunities, uh, recently, all with a completion deadline of September twenty-four. And you may have seen, uh, in the financial update, the revenues equal the expenditures. Um, I'm talking about the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, or as my people call it, the most stringent compliance and coordination process they've ever dealt with in their lives. Um, this is S R one, S R two, and S R three, and they have allowed us to impact twenty-one schools and two administration buildings to update almost three hundred mechanical units, to reconfigure the old pods from the nineteen-seventies at East Montgomery, and to build a nationally recognized school of choice at the Spanish Immersion at Barksdale. This all came at a cost avoidance to the local taxpayers of roughly forty million dollars. So S R allowed us to improve the post-COVID educational environment and focus our local dollars on capital needs, um, other critical capital needs, um, in our inventory of existing buildings. It's important to know that we carry a capital needs inventory of roughly one hundred and fifty-nine million dollars worth of projects. We make things last around here, but at some point, these are projects that will need to be done, uh, for the upkeep of our existing buildings, not for new buildings. Through our capital projects, um, improvement process, we submit requests to the county commission. For the past two years, our county commission has approved over seventeen million dollars in resources to upkeep our existing buildings. FY twenty-three was eight point five million, FY twenty-four was nine point two million, and we've been working on these, uh, over the past, uh, year and a half, and most of these are either complete or in the planning process. We have to work around school operations and the, the weather. Um, these seventeen projects mainly targeted, were mainly targeted at reducing that capital needs inventory. That's that one hundred and fifty-nine million dollars that I was talking about a moment ago. So this allowed us to target roofing systems, HVAC systems, athletic equity, and federal requirements such as Title Nine and ADA regulations. Here are some examples. What you see here is the twenty-two-year-old Rossview Roof, the twenty-seven-year-old Kenwood Roof that we were able to restore. The Kenwood High School Running Track and Tennis Court, we were able to rebuild, resurface, and repaint the Kenwood High School Running Track. It looks brand new. It's beautiful. And then that last one is a photograph of the Northwest High School Girl Softball Facility, which is now in line with federal requirements for girls athletics. We also explored other revenue streams to deliver another half a million dollars with the capacity. The onsite medical clinic at Northeast was ELC Relief Grant. Um, the permanent location for the FIT Building came from an ARP grant, and both of these were also assisted by the leadership of the Fort Campbell Army Base, who helped us source the buildings. But new buildings and capital improvements aren't all we do. We also innovate our buildings to build futures for our students using resources from innovative high school model and innovative school model grants. We are innovating capacity to offer thirty-four different career paths, um, of study for our students. We understand the need to innovate spaces designed to provide families the opportunity to choose schools and programs that will help their children reach their potential. Operations, um, Operations is committed to providing this. We have over eleven hundred employees in the Operations Department that are your traditional vocational career trades, folks. This is our engineering and our maintenance techs, our transportation folks, our logistics folks, our food service, our warehouse, and our custodial workers. My department understands the importance of this. We need job-ready graduates, and we're doing our part to help students explore these career paths. So here shown at the middle school level, um, we built a new culinary, uh, kitchen classroom, uh, shown here at Rossview, and also at New Providence Middle School, a new wood lathe sh- wa- lathe shop, uh, and media arts classroom at Northeast Middle School, new CTE greenhouse and ag education stations at Rossview Middles- uh, Ridgeview Middle School, sorry. At the high schools, we built a web design and logistics lab, shown here at Kirkwood High School. So that's, those are the, the center pictures. This is important because in conjunction with our own teacher warehouse, uh, our students will get real-world experience working with our education foundation, uh, distributing education materials to teachers. Um, we've built mechatronics labs, upgraded infrastructure for high school agriculture programs at Northwest and CHS. Uh, we built, um, multimedia and nursing classrooms at West Creek High School, building a business academy marketplace, and a mozi- modernized cosmetology room shown here at CHS. Those are the two, uh, photographs on the right. I, I used to get my hair cut there. We've also built aviation flight labs and simulators at Rossview High School and shown here at West Creek High School. They're amazing. And an electrical CTE and construction lab shown here at Northeast High School. All of this in support of career tech vocational learning. Not every student is immediately college-bound. We know this and we support the academic, academic offerings and these innovations to help students become job-ready graduates. We want our students to have a solid plan and skills for what's next in their lives, to know what they want and what they don't want. And to ex- we want to expose them to the workplace so that they can make educated decisions about their future. Another way that the Operations Department supports job-ready graduates is by providing real-world job experiences to our students as interns. The gentleman on the left, that's Joe. Joe began his internship at the beginning of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year through the Early Technical College. You know that our Early Technical College, or TCAT, is a hands-on learning experience that allows students an opportunity to work towards an industry certification while they're completing their high school graduation. When Joe interned with us, he learned those employable soft skills and familiarity with the job requirements and customer service. Uh, according to our vehicle maintenance manager, when Joe interned here, you could tell he was learning what it takes to succeed. He is now employed at a truck repair shop in Springfield, Tennessee, running his own service truck. Like TCAT, the CMCSS Operations Department has partnered with our Special Populations Department to create a specially-designed internship program that allows students in the CDC program an opportunity to develop those same skills and knowledge to be marketable in today's workforce. That gentleman in the middle, that's Will. Will is an alumni of Rossview High School, and he graduated in twenty-twenty-three. Will began his CMCSS internship with maintenance on our grounds team. Will hit the ground running, learning new skills, and quickly became a high-performing team member. The CMCSS Maintenance Department was very pleased with Will's abilities and his work ethic, and Will interviewed with and joined CMCSS as a full-time grounds employee this year. He is doing a great job and he has a bright future ahead of him. And that fellow on the far-right side, that's Chase. Chase began his journey with us as an intern in the warehouse in August of twenty-twenty-two, where he was instrumental in delivering mail to schools and other various tasks. He, his dedication and efficiency stood out from the start, and after his internship, he interviewed for a custodial position. He immediately took charge of maintaining the cleanliness of our K-12 virtual school when it opened and they were shorthanded. And now he takes care of our operations buildings. Chase is dependable with a strong worth, work ethic that he attributes directly to his internship with CMCSS. He's a great asset to the school system and he is a bright spot in our own operational workspace. These are just three examples of our many graduates who are making real contributions to our world. This is what career-ready looks like. See those faces? When students are empowered with knowledge and skills, they are productive. And our district offers career training choices to students that are unique in the state of Tennessee, and the Operations Department is proud to assist in the capacity, in that capacity for our families. And finally, an accessibility infrastructure update. You'll remember the thirteen, uh, school-focused city sidewalk projects, uh, approved by the city council. They represent six million dollars in approved city funding for improved safety around sixteen of our schools. Many of these projects are now complete. Um, and shown here are some pictures. Uh, there's Peaches Mill at Burns-Darden, Cunningham Lane at New Providence, Roadear Drive at Kenwood, Golden Eagle at Northeast, that's going to be huge for us, Ridgeview Middle to CHS. And after fifty years, I am proud to announce that we now have a sidewalk along Ridgeview Road to CHS. It's beautiful. Um, in addition to the city projects, we're also pursuing improvements in the county as well. Um, we're working on the legal documents for the Poplar Hills access to East Montgomery. The connectivity to the Liberty Elementary School Working Track and Playground was just co- uh, completed. And then the one on the right is a photograph of the newly-installed ADA accessible access to the football stadium at Montgomery Central High School. So, our takeaways, we're seeing one of our highest bus driver recruiting years on record. We continue to partner with Montgomery County Commission to address capacity needs associated with our community's growth. We still need land, and we're utilizing all of We still need land, and we're utilizing all available resources, including federal grants and other partnerships, in an effort to maintain our existing buildings and infrastructures to the highest standard. And the Operations Department is committed to innovative schools and CTE programs to empower our students to reach their potential. Are there any questions?
Do I have to push the button? I have to push as much?
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm letting him. Thank you so much for the report. You talked about the, uh, a couple of things I want to say here. Actually, let me make a couple of comments, and then I'll, then I'll circle back to the, the first one. I just want to thank the County Commission for, um, funding all those, those different projects. Uh, East Montgomery Elementary School, it does look beautiful over there. I've, I've actually got to walk through during the construction, and I've seen it now afterwards, as my, you know, third-grade son attends there. And also, thank you all so much for the expansion in the foyer. Uh, it was very tight before, and cutting into the prin- the principal's office, uh, make that foyer expansion there was, is huge as well, so we thank you for that. And thank you so much for continuing to work on that Poplar Hill Walkway. Uh, my question for you is, um, what do you contribute to the retention being, rising so high for bus drivers that, so going up to ninety percent, that's, uh, or you said ninety-two percent?
Yeah, ninety-four percent.
Ninety-four percent, that, that's.
On average this year, yeah, that is huge. And, and my answer would be, all of that hard work that you folks put in over the last two years, allowing us to put incentive packages together, improving the pay and making it competitive. Uh, thank you to the County Commission for also allowing that to happen, because you're seeing the results now, it's paying off.
Thank you.
Mr. Garland?
I have a, uh, my question is, Region One and Region Two, can you let me, tell me where they are located?
So Region One would be the extreme northeastern section of the county, so that's out past the interstate, the northeast, Oakland, um, out towards, uh, Guthrie. And then Region Two is going to be the northern section between Fort Campbell Boulevard, the state of Kentucky, uh, Wilmer Rudolph, and the Hundred First Parkway. Roughly.
Going back to, could you tell me what's, um, this trans finder and stop finder is? I've had some questions about that.
Uh, trans finder and stop finder are the routing, uh, bus, bus routing applications that we use. Route find, or trans finder is what we design the entire logistics of the bus fleet on. And then stop finder is the app that parents, um, will, uh, will use to see their bus in, in relative real time. Yeah, we, we've had a lot of questions about that. There are three different software packages, because it also has to talk to power schools. So on any given day, you've got three different pieces of data trying to talk to each other, that does kind of cause some hiccups.
I've had, I've had some people calling and asking, I said, well, my, my kids never drove the bus, so I'd have to find out. Thanks. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Brumley, just a quick question, uh, maybe a little off-topic, but are we still putting, uh, video cameras on the bus to observe the traffic as they go by? And has that yielded anything, or slowed down, or fewer drivers passing buses when they shouldn't?
Yes, sir, we're, we're, we're putting, so the, the cameras that we are putting on our buses that are new, our buses have always had interior-facing cameras. We're now putting dash cams on our buses, um, and they, they do yield in, information, uh, lawn, you know, for, for investigations.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Appreciate it.
That concludes my report on Goal Eight. Have a wonderful Veterans Day.
All right. Comments by county commissioners? Seeing none? Oh, comments by board members? Mr. Makery?
Yeah, I just want to, um, ask the chairman to, at the formal session, to, um, add to discussion, the review, and changes for board governance policy. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Number eight, other business?
Good evening, Board members. Today, while students were off calendar for Election Day, our educators were taking the opportunity to gather and collaborate for professional development. It was wonderful to witness teachers and administrators spending the day to better prepare for our students. Speaking of days off calendar, next Monday, we will observe Veterans Day. Hopefully, you are all following our CMCSS social media websites that have been saluting employees that are veterans of the armed services. In a community that is so deeply rooted with military connections, I want to say sincere thank you to our veterans and their families who make so many sacrifices. Many of our schools will be honoring, honoring our veterans with assemblies throughout the week. Mr. Lanier, this concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you. Okay. Calls, the meeting closed.